Good afternoon, everyone, colleagues, staff, Superintendent Michael. We're here this afternoon in a board work session to discuss the superintendent's draft fiscal year 2023 budget. We have with us the superintendent. We also have our chief operating officer, Mr. Prue, our executive director of finance, Mr. Brandenburg, and Mr. Sisler, who is our budget and finance manager. I just want to call to your attention the general fund budget calendar that should be in the front pocket of your binder. I had some questions this afternoon about what happens after our work session today. Later this afternoon, we have at our business meeting an action item where we will, we have the opportunity to adopt the superintendent's recommended general fund budget as the board's budget. So then it becomes the board's draft general fund budget. That draft budget, copies of that go to the public, will go to, copy will go to the Budget Advisory and Review Committee, fondly known as the BARC. The BARC will review that budget, and they will come before the board about a month from now, or exactly a month from now, on March 1st, to present their recommendations to the board. At that same business meeting, there will be a public hearing where the public can comment on the board's draft budget. In mid-March, we'll have a joint meeting with the commissioners to present the draft budget, and then later in the month, we will adopt the board's budget. So if you have any questions about that process? I have it all right there. Mr. Prue's here to answer any questions about the process.
And I think Mrs. Williams, I'll comment that I believe we are tentatively scheduled for the joint meeting with the commissioners on Tuesday, March 8th. That's the second Tuesday of the month.
March 8th.
Time yet to be determined, is my understanding.
Okay, and that is the, that is for the draft budget, correct?
Correct. The, the board will share their draft budget, and that is at least a week before the board will make action and decide if that's, whether they're ready to adopt their budget on the 25th of the month. That should be two weeks.
Thank you. So any questions about the process before we turn it over to Dr. Michael?
I have a question.
Mr. Bickford?
That March 8th meeting, is that, this isn't a joint, this is part of the commissioners' morning meeting?
Time has yet to be determined, so it may be subsequent, it may be a separate meeting from their morning meeting.
Okay, so we'll just block out the day.
I think typically, typically, I think it's been an afternoon meeting.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll try to reach out to Mrs. Hart and see if we can get confirmation of a time.
Okay.
I think, Mr. Prue, we ought to think about location, too. I mean, the last couple of times, I think we presented there in their chambers, and it's a little awkward for the board. You know, they're up at their dais, and we're surrounded there. I don't know if they'd have the opportunity to come here or not, but we certainly could, you know, spread out here and, and have a different setting, or even another, other location.
I can discuss that with the county administrator as well.
Okay, Mrs. Williams, if we're ready. Okay, today, so in December, I presented you my draft budget. Today, I'm presenting my recommended budget to the board for your consideration to adopt as your draft budget, as indicated by Mrs. Williams. A lot of what you're going to see today is going to look very similar to what we presented in December. The changes are pretty much things that we were made aware of since I made that presentation in December. So the adjustments are, to some degree, ones that are beyond my control, or things that we just weren't aware of, or I would have placed them in the budget in December. As you look at this list, we, same as we did last time, all those items in blue, just kind of the overview of the budget, the big areas of the budget. You have a four-page document in your materials that kind of outline, is laid out with these titles, and then obviously, you have the 41-page document that has all the details of the budget. But I'm not going to read that list to you, but it's the same setup as we had before. We're going to go back through those, with the exception of, in red, you see blueprint pre-K pass-through. So in our pre-K funding, and we'll talk about this when we get to it, we're apparently going to be the pass-through for pre, for daycare providers that meet the pre-K eligibility under the Excel's requirement. And if they meet the Excel's requirement, similar to what our pre-Ks do, and they work with us, or wherever through the state, we'll be, we'll receive the money, and we'll just expense it and hand it right back out to the daycares. And that is something new that came about. So I think it's 17 students on our list are actually in nursery schools beyond our, outside of us. And we didn't know it was going to work this way, but now that we do, we've added it to our budget, and it's really, literally a pass-through. We receive the money as part of our increase, and then we expense the money, we just pass the exact same amount out. And we'll show you that in just a minute. Our revenues have changed to $15.9 million at this point from the state. There's been a little adjustment in our average enrollment, so they've taken the three-year average enrollment, is how they're basing the money right now. You know, as we talked before, the original blueprint money has now been rolled into foundation and into blueprint formulas, and that's how we receive the money. The largest chunk of this increase in money is a result of pre-K. So the state is struggling, or I don't know if they're struggling, they decided not to follow exactly what's in Curben. So 300% the poverty rate, we get, there's an allocation per student, the state provides 65% of that allocation to Washington County Public Schools. And then as that changes from 300 to 600% poverty, there's a lesser amount. As it gets over 600% of the poverty rate, we don't receive any funding for those students. The state for this year is counting all students as if they're at the 300% poverty rate. So we are getting the full state funding at 65% for this year. So it resulted in a significant increase in our pre-K funding. The caution that I would offer to, and I have to staff already, and to the board, a portion of that, if they don't do that again next year, and I would assume that they'll start to follow that formula, we will not receive that money. Now, what's going to happen in the blueprint? The money per student is going up next year, so it will not be as big a hit, assuming we have the identical enrollment and the makeup of our students as far as their free and reduced meals, or the poverty rate is identical. We believe it could be about $1 million of non-recurring money, and it's just something to be mindful of. We do believe a portion of that increase that we see here is going to be backfilled. So we'll be glad to take questions as we go, or at any point, so please stop me and, or wait after we make the presentation, and then we can go back through anything that you want to do. So any, any way the board's comfortable, please don't hesitate to interrupt me. Our next slide is the local revenue side, so we've adjusted things to align with what we need for revenue. We don't have an official number on the educational effort escalator. We don't know why, we're trying to get that right at the winter break, or over the winter break. Staff asked about it at a meeting on January 27th. They said, yep, the numbers will be coming out, but I think we made a pretty good estimate of what it's going to be. Our request to the county commissioners this year is basically hold us harmless for the reduction in student enrollment. They're going to be required to provide the educational effort, and beyond that educational effort is a couple hundred thousand that we need to balance this budget. So when we look at this, as I look at this, if I was any other budgeting category across the county, we're asking the county commissioners to increase our funding approximately 2.7% over what they provided last year. I would think most of the departments going to the county commissioners will be asking for greater increases than 2.7%, but 2.7% is all, this budget is asking the county commissioners over funding from last year. So I look at that, and I see that as about half the inflationary rate that's occurred over the last year, and we're, it appears we're going to be into another significant year of inflation. So I think our budget and our request to the local funding agency is a very, very reasonable ask at 2.7% of an increase. I'm seeing across the state, a lot of the counties, and I've been sharing a few of those articles that I see on conduit street with the board, people asking for 5%, 10%, 15% from their local funding agencies. So again, I see this as a very reasonable ask of the county commissioners. You're going to see, again, in the budget, there's just nothing significantly new that's going to contribute to the education of our students, really maintaining what we currently have, and we need support from our county to do that. So one of the things we had in your list was adjustments that we made during the FY22 year. The only significant adjustment we made was the addition of one as attendance secretary at South. We shared this in December, about $44,000. We also had a number of positions that, for the last couple of years, have been funded with blueprint grants. The blueprint grants, at this point, have been rolled into this foundation formula, the new calculation. So we have rolled those positions, and they have followed the grants into our general fund. They're going to total about 1.86 million. You can see the beginning of this list on this slide. Math content specialists, back up a second, Jeff, please. Two behavior support teachers, four pairs for behavior support, and those positions plus these next positions, the 21 special ed positions, coordinator of mental health, some contractual services for speech, language, and interpreters, all of that added together is 1.86 million. All of those positions exist right now. All of those positions exist right now. So none of this is buying anything new in the budget. It's just rolling from grant-funded, Maryland grant-funded money into our general foundation formula, and we're just having those positions follow the money. Other grant adjustments, we had a pre-K expansion grant last year. Again, all these positions exist in our grant, in our general fund, or in our, excuse me, in our schools right now, so these are not net new positions. All these positions are on our current program. They're also what's responsible for a significant increase in funding, because we've had these children in our schools. We rebounded from the significant reduction we had when we were fully virtual, to this year, we bounced back to almost 1,100 students, so we're back kind of to where we were two years ago. But these positions already exist in the budget, they're just currently funded by the pre-K expansion grant, and we're rolling them back into the budget. So in federal grants, a couple of years ago, we had a reading initiative grant, and also some ESER funding now, that's funded a couple of the positions coming up on the next two slides. So the total of these is going to be $881,000. Those two literacy specialists and the EL teacher over at Pangborn, at our welcome center, was all part of that reading literacy grant we had for about four years. We tried last year to put it into the budget, we weren't able to fund it in the budget, so we rolled it over to ESER for a period of time, and now all these positions were recommended be rolled into the general budget. Again, all these positions currently exist, and are not going to be new things, they're not going to be things that are going to help us advance education, they're just, this is, again, maintaining our current budget. So next slide is the balance of those, associate accountant, the half, two half clerical positions, again, for a total of $881,000, coming over from federal grants, either ESER or those reading grants. What is new to the budget or potentially new? And I say potentially new, because we still have six social workers slash counselors, I don't remember the exact combination, in ESER funding right now, that do exist today. We have six, again, it could be three counselors, three social workers, I don't remember the exact mix, I don't know if anybody can help me or not, but we have six positions over in ESER funding. I'm recommending, these are net new to the general fund, three new positions, that could be either three counselors or three social workers. I want the student service department to evaluate our needs and determine the highest priority of where they should go, including, is it more important that we pull three of the six positions that are in ESER funding over into the general fund with these positions, or should these be a net new three positions? And that would just mean, at some point in the future, we either need to cut those six positions that are funded by ESER, or find a way to pull them into the general fund. Right now, the ESER grants, ESER III grant runs until September of 2025, so it'll run partway into the FY25 year, but only a couple months into that year. So all those positions in ESER, I've worked with staff, we have an exit plan for the positions, some of them you see coming into the general fund in this budget. Some of those positions will be eliminated, some of those positions will be funded by concentration of poverty, which is going to be a significant increase over the next couple of years at our high-poverty schools, but it probably will reduce resources at our lower-poverty schools. So we're, we have an exit plan for all those positions, but these are three that could be a net new, or could be an opportunity to bring over three of the six that are still over in ESER. At this point, they're showing as a net new to the budget. This slide, the money's changed in that the items across the top, the four items we've talked about in December, they have not changed, but the resource officer salary increased. We did get confirmation from the county and the city with the resource officers' costs for the balance of this year, as well as what they'll cost starting July 1st, and that money's a little over $300,000, and that's been rolled into this number. So you can see that 2.98 has changed since the last slide that we had there prior to the winter break, and that's because of the resource officer salary increase. This is the money I was talking about with the pre-K centers, so I think it was 17 or 19 students qualified from one of the pre-K centers that are not part of Washington County Public Schools, and this is strictly a pass-through, so we received 112,000 for those students as part of their increase in pre-K, but then we had to turn around and take the 112,000 out and send it to the daycare provider in this situation. So that's new. There are three areas revised on this slide. You can see our new money amount is 12.9 million. The $20 increase in substitute pay you saw in December. The most significant expense that's been increased in this, so while we're pleased to get more money, again, primarily driven by pre-K, that will not be sustainable for the future, or not all of that money, so we just need to be aware of that. We had a mandatory increase in pension rate. So it went from four-something to over 5%. Made a net change to us about 1.5 million, I believe, team, 1.5 million. So in December, we did not know about this. This is a mandatory expense, we must pay it. I've been watching some of the state funding conversation. It appears the state funding pension has been reduced possibly, or changed with what they're planning for the future. I don't know if this is in preparation for raises to come, mandatory raises that are coming, with that 10% for teachers and 60% starting salary. I don't know, I haven't yet figured it out why this is, but it's a mandatory increase of 1.5% over what we had projected, and it's, you know, while we had a, a nice increase in state funding, almost all of it's lost to this, to this increase. Our salary resource pool, we've sharpened our pencil, we've, I made sure, this is one of my highest priorities in the budget this year. I've shared with the board, I think filling positions is going to be very challenging going forward. Again, we have not added, we've added three counselors, that's it, as far as new positions to this budget. Other counties are adding hundreds of positions, from what I can tell. As they address the challenges and crisis of COVID, as they start to implement what they see coming in the Curben legislation, as they start expanding their pre-K. So I'm very, very concerned that we are going to be competing. We had this highest starting salary for quite a while. I think we're going to see ourselves drop from the highest starting salary here very quickly, and fall well behind here in the next year or two. So salaries is one of my main drivers in this, to attract staff. ESP right now, we are probably, I probably should give you an accurate number rather than a guess, but I would say 70, 80 ESP position openings. We've been battling 40 IA openings since pretty much the start of the school year. We fill two, we lose two. We fill two, we lose two. Seven, eight, 10 custodian openings, eight or 10 transportation openings between drivers and bus attendants, several administrator openings, which we've been battling all year. Generally, we start with administrative team and have them all year, and we've had a pretty steady turnover of administrators, because they're like gold right now for every district, and even the private sector and governmental agencies. A number of our administrators have been able to take advantage of opportunities. Then obviously, our teachers are a very, very valuable resource, and we want to have competitive salaries for our, for our teachers. The last item is a pair professional reclassification that the board approved at the last meeting in December, I believe, where we moved our IAs from grade five to grade six. So far, I'm hoping that it's helped us to retain IAs, but at this point, like I say, I think we have over 40 IA openings at this point. So that obviously has not addressed everything up to this point. I'm hoping the labor market changes sometime here in the near future. As we do every year, and we talked about this in December, we go through every line of the budget, we try to make reductions where we can. A large portion of this is turnover credits, more senior people retiring, leaving us, and more junior people, or less expensive people coming into our ranks, so that's a large part of this. So these are cuts of 1.86 million, we talked about these back in December, so it hasn't changed. I'd probably be concerned, if anything, in this, you know, we didn't add a lot of areas for inflationary costs. So our textbooks and our equipment and our materials, and many of those things are identical to what they were last year, which means if we're in 6% inflation, it's going to buy 6% less than what it did the year before. And, you know, a lot of those categories, we don't adjust for years and years at a time, and eventually, that catches up with you. So with that, we'll be glad to answer any questions. If you're looking at the four-page document or the budget book, just please let us know what line you're on, what page you're on, and, and we'll try to catch up here with you. So at this point, I'm requesting the board to consider this as my recommendation to the board, and then obviously, when you adopt it as your draft, it's yours to, to adjust as you see fit going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Colleagues, questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Bickford?
The new counselors, go back to that page. So those would be three additional counselors?
The way I have it proposed in the budget is, you know, it's one of the needs that we continue to have, to address the social, emotional needs for our students, just to help with a wide variety of assignments that counselors have. So the way I have it proposed in this budget is three positions, I have not determined, I have not nailed them down to be counselors or social workers. One, I want to see if it survives the budgeting process, and then I want our student service team to have an opportunity to look at how they would be used. The point I was making to the board, we do have six positions that are still over in ESER grant, that we've expanded counseling services significantly. Six of those positions are grant-funded at this point. Again, it's a split between counselors and social workers, and we do need to be aware how we either face the fact that we're going to eliminate them in the future in the ESER funding, or pull them into the general fund. But this would be an opportunity right now, we could go up three, if these survive the budget, as long as we leave the other six in the ESER funds.
And you see this as part of a tactic to address the growing emotional, mental health, and behavioral needs?
I think they're a great help on our behavioral needs. I mean, these, our counselors are, you know, not psychologists or psychiatrists, but they're a great person to talk to. And I think for some children, they prefer to talk to a counselor as opposed to talk to their teacher. For other people, their teacher's the person they build a relationship with. You know, our needs for our students has continued to grow, the pandemic has heightened all of that, so our counselors are just a valuable resource, as are, as our social workers are a valuable resource. So over the last number of budgets, we've been trying to slowly increase our counselor effort. Our enrollment's declined a little bit over the last couple of years, and we've added more counselors than social workers, so we're kind of nibbling away at that ideal ratio concept, and this is a way to continue to do that.
You think that would be, I guess what I'm, I know one of our top priorities is always behavior, but I think now more than ever, it's one, catching up kids from, from COVID, and also dealing with some of the severe behavior issues we've heard about, and we've all talked about for many years. Do you think that's, that's a key tactic, is hiring additional coun, would that, will that help make a dent?
I'm hoping our behavior support programs have made steady progress. I think the challenge we have is the needs are just so great. The number of counselors that we have, even in schools where we have multiple counselors, just isn't enough, is what I keep hearing from principals. So I'm trying to respond to that request for additional counselor support from our student service team. You know, again, we've, we've really tried to address this through, beginning with ESER, and try to pre-fund some areas, even with concentration of poverty money, that we anticipate, you know, picking up a social worker or so out of the concentration of poverty money. So we try to pre-address that the best we can, but the needs, the needs are many, and the hands to work on that are few.
Yeah, got it. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Dr. Sammar. Can we have any kind of longitudinal study in place for both ABLE and the pre-K, so we can follow the impact that this money has on these particular students?
Repeat that question one more time. I heard the question, but I don't think I completely understood.
Have we implemented any kind of longitudinal study to follow the kids both in ABLE and in our pre-K program, so that at some point in time, we can evaluate how, how much we have earned from, for our money?
So pre-K, when we started, and we started to expand, we were really excited when we kind of went from that 600, 700 number of half-day, till we jumped up to 1,100 full-day pre-K programs. What we saw right away, this goes back five years ago, what we saw right away is, when those kids hit kindergarten, we suddenly had more children in kindergarten, ready for kindergarten, mixed with children that weren't ready for kindergarten. And we had to up our kindergarten game from a standpoint of differentiating in our instruction. We couldn't start with the letter A and just teach all the children A. We've changed completely how we do kindergarten instruction. And what we saw the year after that was, we had a significantly change where we were going in first grade, were prepared to adapt to that, because of those students that had pre-K, K, and now going into first grade. Nationwide, a lot of times, they say pre-K doesn't work, and the reason, and what they mean by that, when they measure that like in third or fourth grade, they can't tell the difference, is because schools don't capitalize on what children learn in pre-K. They just kind of all teach to the middle when they hit kindergarten and first grade. I really felt good about how we were adjusting to kindergarten, and how we adjusted to first grade, and then whack, we got hit with COVID. And it's kind of unwound all that. This year, I feel good about where we are again in pre-K, because last year, we dropped back to like 700 and some students in pre-K, and it obviously wasn't a full year, and much of it was online. It was a high priority of the board and our staff to have them back in the fall, until we all went out on COVID. We saw very positive results out of pre-K, but right now, we're about half were in pre-K and about half were not. Those that weren't in pre-K, almost regardless of what else they had, their readiness is significantly lower than the students who were in our pre-K. I'm hoping next September, when we take kindergarten readiness tests, with 1,100 of our children now in pre-K, we're going to see not only an increase in the percentage of students that are kindergarten-ready as a result of pre-K, but because the number's so much higher, it's going to take it all up significantly. We have to capitalize on that, again, in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, as we move forward. If we don't, it all just gets lost in the mix. ABLE is still so new to us, the longitudinal data will take a while to come up with longitudinal data with ABLE. We had a debate this week, is kindergarten really appropriate for a student, is on ABLE? Virtually, is kindergarten the right age? There's some debate early on, as we went to virtual schooling, you know, pre-K, K1, 2, is it appropriate for those students to learn virtually? Is it better? I think there's going to be a lot of research coming out on that going forward. We're going to make a final determination if we're going to offer virtual kindergarten for next year. I, I have some questions about it, but I'm going to leave it to the instructional team to make the final determination. We do believe we have a greater offering, maybe, than some of the other options, if you're not going to send your child to school. You know, I, I don't know that I want to take away that option, but it's going to take time to study what's happening with ABLE. I think our staff's doing an amazing job for those students that are showing up every day. I think it's going very well. Right now, it's about 68% farm rate among our students that are in ABLE, which surprises me a little bit. We obviously only have one section in many of the grades, especially the younger grades, so it's a pretty wide mix, a range of ability of our students. So we're just going to have to see where we are. Right now, my intention, there's no money in this, or intention to expand ABLE for next year. I think we need another year to kind of get our feet completely under, under ourselves. We need a normal year, hopefully, it's next year, to see who's going to return to school. We need a normal year, hopefully it's next year, to see who's going to return to school, where other students might be interested in virtual schooling that currently don't take advantage of the public school. You know, homeschooling grew significantly as a result of the pandemic. For some children, that could be a wonderful opportunity. For others, it could be an escape away from school period, and I'm very concerned what that might do for children that are not getting regular schooling and homeschooling. All homeschooling is not equal, obviously. So I don't know if I helped answer your question or not.
It did. I just, when I go through the back part of the targeted programs, ABLE is not broken out, so I don't know how much we're spending on it, and, you know, in the future, how the dollars per student impacted learning.
ABLE right now, the students are enrolled in their home school.
Okay.
The funding is part of, so elementary student, elementary teachers, middle school teachers, high school teachers will be reflected in the budget under those areas as those people are rolled into the general fund budget. Right now, the majority of ABLE is still funded in the ESER grant. However, we do anticipate making some adjustments in staffing. Again, some of it's going to be that decline in middle school and high school a little bit, maybe we can pick up some positions and start pulling some of those ABLE positions in, because if we don't, in September of '25, which is very far away, once we get to September here, '22 coming up, you know, we'll have 22 positions we need to make a decision on. Do you close ABLE? Do you cut staff across the system? So we have a plan, we're going to roll some of those in this year, and again, we're going to have to watch what happens with enrollment. Who's coming back? Will we have in-migration with some of the housing that we see right now? Will people stay with private school or stay with homeschooling, which was our biggest increase across the state of Maryland, was in homeschooling and wasn't in private schooling according, and I think I sent some of that information to the board Friday, so.
Yes, Mr. Evans.
Yeah, I'm looking at page five of 41 here, the Office of Instructional Supervision. I see that we're adding four positions to the regular programs. What are those positions?
So I think if you go to the one slide where we were listing out some of the things that we're already doing this year, I'm going to let Eric answer the question so he can give the exact positions. Is that five of 41? Yes, Eric, you want to itemize that list for us, but it's four of those that are up here on the slides, I'm pretty sure.
Yes. If you go, if you look at the summary, the first page of the summary, it talks about, the first one is what the elementary math content specialist that's coming over from Blueprint Funding. And then we have-
Eric is on page one of three of our summary pages.
Right, and that is, that line he's referring to is line 3A1.
Why don't we give everybody a chance to get there? So if you go to that three-page summary, coming down the left-hand side, remember number, number three, grant adjustments, A1, so. And that's also, if you look up on the screen right now, where we have elementary math content specialists, that's, that's one of those positions.
Okay.
Go ahead, Eric.
And then the, the second, if you look at this, on the same page, one of the summary, down to 3C, the first, number one, we have the two literacy achievement coordinators that we've had for four or five years, that are currently in ESER this year, will be moving over to the general fund. And then the, the fourth position is described back on page two of the summary, and it's actually under Section 8A, where we have the budget adjustments by program. It's number one, where we have a lead counselor. If you look on that same page four that you're referencing of the 41 page, you'll see the, a minus one, just a couple lines below, that position of lead counselor is going to be redeployed as a supervisor of counseling.
Are we required to keep those positions as a condition of accepting that grant money?
We're not required to keep the positions, no. These are choices that we've made to try to address the needs of students.
And, and because I guess, you know, my, my biggest concern is, you know, when we start adding these positions, and like you said, obviously, they've been here before, we're adding these positions, this, this to me seems like money that we could be spending on hiring new teachers and new parapros, what instructional assistants, whatever it may be. And, you know, when, when we know that we're going to have to hire a certain amount of teachers as required by law, and we're going to have to increase a lot of our, our starting salaries, whether we like it or not, you know, it seems like these are some of those positions that while it may be painful to cut, we have to start looking at making some of those difficult decisions when, you know, we're hoping that we're going to get money from the county commissioners, but, you know, hope isn't really a good plan either. So, you know, it's, it's just one of those things where I understand the need for these positions. I certainly appreciate them, but I wonder if, if we can go and explore a little more, you know, the, the balance between going and hiring a couple new teachers rather than moving these positions into the general fund. Does that make sense?
Could I say something to, in response to what-
Well, sure.
Okay, thank you. My understanding is that we're using this federal grant money to provide additional support to address needs that we have in our school. So the superintendent and staff have identified these positions as needed to address the needs. So those needs aren't going to go away, and when the grant money goes away, that means these positions have to go away, that have been created to address the existing needs. So they have to go into the general fund for us to keep those positions. So when I look at those things up there, I, I don't know what, of what's listed there, I would want to trade out, excuse me, trade out for a classroom teacher, because I think they're addressing very, very specific, very serious needs. So that's, that's what I would say.
And again, like I said, I completely understand and certainly appreciate the function of these positions. And while, yes, I, I agree 100%, the goal is to address needs of the students, you know, at some point, we have to go and, and make the, the, the resources more directly available to these students rather than have them, you know, and, I mean, I don't know the exact description of these jobs, I don't want to go in too much detail there, but, you know, we have to go and, and, you know, we, we, in other words, I guess we, we can't blame, you know, needs that have came about because of COVID, you know, forever, and at some point, there's a reason why these grant funds will run up, because, you know, you can't just continually blame things on COVID. So, you know, like I said, my thing is, I, I just think that if these, if these positions are there to kind of jumpstart the support that the kids need now, I think we could go and finish the job with the in-class teachers.
Well-
And I wonder, I shouldn't say I think, I wonder.
The needs for literacy support, that's not a result of COVID. ELL teachers, we've had a need for more ELL teachers, that's not a result of COVID. We've needed additional administrative support. The assistant principals at one of the most challenging high schools in the county, that's not a result of COVID, although it's been exacerbated, the need for additional administrative support. And the same way with the intervention specialists. So I don't see that any of those, I, I'm grateful that we're getting the money as a result of the grant because of COVID, but those needs existed and have been exacerbated by the situation. So that, that, that's what I would say to you, Mr. Evans.
I, like I said, I completely understand, and I guess it's more of a, I guess, a theoretical disagreement, because I just find more value, I, I personally, I mean, we, we've had these positions, and I'm not saying that the positions don't work, I, I truly believe they do work very well, but I also think that if we're able to add more teachers and make our class sizes smaller, that a lot of these problems would be a lot, would be more efficiently addressed as well, rather than, you know, having some of these teachers. Again, I understand that, you know, these ELL positions, you know, they're, you know, I, I understand the need for these, but if we can go and find ways to add more teachers, I really believe, and obviously I have nothing to back it up on, it's, it's, you know, my thought, I really believe that we would see a lot of the issues that we're seeing, you know, not necessarily go away, but, but start to decrease.
Well, I mean, let me back up on a couple things. I mean, supposedly, the research on class size, there's not a lot of research that supports that lower class size increases student achievement. The research that I've read, and it's been studied for years and years and years, it's really only your highest poverty schools, and then only if you can drive class size down like 12 or 13 students. It's real, and then you have to take advantage that you have a class of 12 or 13 students, advantage in the way of meeting the individual needs of children. But we have fairly good class size in Washington County compared to many places. We also have other challenges that a lot of other places don't have. I would say this, in these positions, we have carefully evaluated these against adding additional teachers or whatever. For instance, the first position listed on these slides, the two achievement coordinators and the EL teacher that we have over at the Welcome Center, they were part of our literacy grant, it was a little over a million dollars. We had it for about four years. We tried to pull those three positions into the budget last year. The only reason they're over in ESER this year is because we didn't have the resources last year to pull those resources in. We have a significant number of tutors, and I see the tutoring program going to need to expand with the concentration of poverty, and you need people to drive those programs. And that's what these two positions do for elementary and secondary schools. Our EL teacher over at the Welcome Center is being overrun at this point. I, I can't say I'm frequently at Pangborn, but I've been at Pangborn probably five or six times this year, either for a full visit or to stop by for various need. And, you know, our, our EL specialist at, at the Welcome Center is out in the vestibule greeting families every time that I've been there, every time that I've been there. Right now, it's summertime for some of the South American countries, and this is when we get our big wave of EL students, and I'm hearing that from almost every principal that they're getting students pretty frequently. So I see that need's going to continue to grow. So this, to Melissa's point, we're challenged by what COVID has done to exasperate our gap with students, but now's not the time to take away leadership from our tutoring programs. And that's what these positions do, is really drive our tutoring programs. The one counseling position, we're changing from a counselor to a counseling administrator. Part of the challenge, and I can't put a number to it, I don't know if Peggy can, but, you know, we have grown 30, 40 counselors and social workers over the last number of years, and we have not, we still have, just Ms. Huffer is the only one to supervise all that. There's a need to provide support to all these brand-new counselors and people to help them meet the needs of children the very best we can. To your point, Mr. Evans, we evaluate when we make these proposals, and it's certainly up to the board to decide what they want to do, but I, I and staff have evaluated this position versus that position, and not just on this list, on long list. If I brought the list that were proposed by our supervisors and directors and senior staff, we'd be adding hundreds of positions. Again, this budget adds, and it might add zero, but right now, as long as we keep those other six over in ESER, which they will run out, and they will need to be cut or pulled into the budget, this budget adds three net new positions to where we are today. That is not going to address the needs of COVID gap, it is not going to address the needs of what we've seen in behavior issues. But again, and I understand exactly what you're saying, and that's exactly what we need to do with all positions and expenditures, is evaluate them against other expenditures. But in my budget at least, I see these as high-priority positions to address literacy, which we've been challenged to address. What's coming with Kerwin and the accountability and all that is going to hit us like a sledgehammer. You know, our gaps have continued to grow, our staff has done an amazing job, our tutors are doing an amazing job, but with COVID and our attendance and, I, I don't want to blame it on illness, but whatever it is that all of us feel right now with COVID, we have a lot to recover from. And it's going to come through specialized services targeted at special needs children, targeted at, targeted at EL students, targeted at various subgroups of children that just have learning gaps, and it's not going to be repaired from COVID in a couple of years, and I fear that it's things that have challenged us for a long period of time. We've always had these gaps. The expectation of the blueprint is you, this big influx of money coming is to close those gaps, and we're not going to close those gaps by the teacher being there alone. Some teachers might believe that, but when they're held accountable for their individual students, they're going to want help and support, and these are the positions that do that.
So I guess my, my question then is, do these literacy achievement coordinators work directly with the students, or are they more directly with the teachers?
More directly with the teachers, but they do a lot of modeling. I'm going to call on Dr. Willow, they work directly for Dr. Willow, and I want to make sure he has an opportunity to, to speak directly to that. But these are positions that we're seeing great benefit out of, we're seeing our reading ERI scores grow, they're a big part of our whole literacy program beyond the tutor program.
Correct. And Dr. Michael, you are, you're accurate, we have two in the entire county. So we have one at the elementary and then one at the secondary. If you remember, I think it was literacy, we did two board presentations ago, and we went over the 21 tutors. They oversee the tutors, but they also do a number of professional learning sessions, such as reading apprenticeship at South Hagerstown High School. I bring that up because we've done presentations on the success of that with the board as well. To eliminate them would leave one elementary content specialist left for all of the professional learning and working with teachers in the county. So these are, these are high needs, it's why they've been identified in past budgets to bring these positions over. Currently, out at Pangborn with our EL population, Dr. Michael is right, I want to say, when we reported at the beginning of the year, we were around 610 students in EL. We are now sitting, I think, close to 670 since the start of the year. So that is a population that is also increasing, and again, I don't see that going down, I only see that increasing over the next couple of months. So this is our support person that works directly with our families as they enroll, providing translation services, and they work through all of the schools in order to set up enrollments and testing. Is there any other specific questions?
Well, and, and I'll just leave it at this, I don't want to beat a dead horse or anything, but, you know, I guess my, the point I'm trying to make is, I just want more direct student, you know, involvement with the staff, as much as possible at least, and if, if, you know, like I said, the EL teacher position, that's not necessarily my concern, because they're working directly with the students. If we could get those literacy achievement coordinators to be working directly with the students, I would be perfectly happy with that, you know, more with the students, you know? And I guess that's, that's kind of what my concern is.
I understand your question, Mr. Evans, but I'm going to just respectfully disagree.
And I understand.
I had the opportunity today to be in Ruth A. Monroe and Eastern, I guess, probably combined, for about three hours between the two schools. Both schools out in the hallway, because we just don't have a lot of little office spaces, some places we do. I saw our reading interventions, our tutor people, that are guided and directed by these people. They're trained and supervised. I mean, they had kids pulled out, and you go in a classroom for a while and come back out, there'd be another student with them, and this is what's driving that contact with students. And I appreciate, we want to have everything directed right at the student levels as we possibly can, but some of that takes leadership, and that's what these positions provide. The two individuals have no hesitation working directly with students and modeled that with students, but they oversee a great deal more than that, that's directly impacting our student achievement. If they didn't, I would eliminate the positions. I have no hesitation about holding on to things or, or anything at all like that. I try to be very conservative with our budget. I'm telling you, you're going to see other districts are going to add, they're going to be adding to things like this. They'll be adding people to their administrative ranks, because there's going to be so much to oversee, and there's a lot of data to review, identifying what children are going to be supported by the reading tutors and things like that, is a big part of their role. I, I'm just amazed at the work they do, and they're contributing to student success every day, so. But I appreciate, every position needs to be looked at that way. I mean, what you're bringing up, I wouldn't make it specific to this, but every position needs to be looked at that way. I can assure you, that's how I look at every position. I would love to have the luxury of some of what I see in nearby counties, where they, you know, they're going to count on 10, 15, 20 million, you know, 50 million from their county government. Now, we're not that kind of- Now, we're not that kind of size, but half of those numbers in districts that are twice our size certainly would be huge helps to what we're doing, not only in salary, but also these other supports. These people are directly supporting students and supporting teachers.
Dr. Michael, I, I don't have a question, but I do have several comments that I'd like to make. And before we come back to you two for second questions, if there's anyone over here who hasn't had an opportunity to ask a question, is it all right if we go to them and then come back to you? You know, you're, you've, you've made the point that other counties are adding hundreds of positions there addressing the COVID crisis and the blueprint challenges and that we are making a very reasonable request. Last year, we asked for additional funding, which we did not receive, that would have allowed us to have additional counselors, that would have allowed us to have English language learner teachers, which, you know, all of those supports, which I view as critical for our students. So my concern is that we're not asking for what we need for our students. We're asking for what we think we can get. my role is to advocate for what these students need. And I think we're doing the very, very best we can to provide them with academic opportunities, with the resources and the supports needed for them to be successful. But I feel very strongly that we need to be doing more to help these students, especially in the early years, by providing resources that will address their difficulties with self-regulation, with handling emotional distress. And that's why I'm a proponent for additional guidance counselors. I, I appreciate that you've got these three positions, but it's, it's not enough. We had a severe need for these positions before COVID and we have a more serious need as a result of COVID. So I just, I don't know. It's a no-brainer to me for the commissioners to hold us harmless and give us that, that funding as a result of what COVID did to the school system. But I really feel that, that the commissioners need to do better with funding our needs. And one way that they could do better would be to give us or to take back the 1 million that it costs us for resource officers and enable us to have that money to put to the needs of our students, to educate and give the very best we can give to all of our students. So at the very least, I would like to include in the request that we're making that they either give us that additional million or that they take it out of our budget and free up that million. So colleagues, I, I put that out to you. I, I don't know what your thoughts are, but I feel very strongly about having a guidance counselor in each elementary school. And in cases where we have large schools of 500 or more, we need at least two. We, you know, we can't continue not to address the needs. And we can keep adding behavior support programs and staff, but is that really addressing what the problem is?
I think it's a careful balance of all those things. And I think that's what we have in our budget and that's what we try to present. But.
Over here, questions?
I, I just have a comment, a comment. As I look at that slide up there, I had the opportunity to visit South Eye for about four hours back, I guess it was in November. there's no doubt, South Eye needs the assistant principal positions, the intervention specialist, the things I observed in just four hours. I have to commend the staff there for putting up with some of the things they put up with because I, I couldn't be able to do it, I can tell you that. The EL position, I see it's at the Welcome Center, but we need EL positions. Having taught in, in my career, students from Latin America, from Motivall, which is an old Russian republic, Belarus, Cambodia, Vietnam, I was fortunate in many cases that those students had a good knowledge of English and so forth. But it was still difficult at times trying to teach government to them and teaching terms that are particularly used with teaching government. As far as the literacy achievement coordinators, my position is this, you guys work with the operations of the schools day in and day out. We come in on the backside once in a while and get involved, not in operations, but in hearing things about operations and so forth. So with the blueprint coming and the higher standards that are coming, if you guys say this is where we need to put these people, I don't think I'm in a position to say otherwise. So that's where I stand on this. And I agree with you about the SROs. I've said that for years. That needs to be out of the public safety budget. No reason for it not to be.
Mrs. Murray? I, I agree with both of you. I, I was going to say the same thing. All of those positions are absolutely necessary and yes, the SROs need to go into the safety budget of the county commissioners and not out of our budget. I would, I would say that over and over again and have been saying it. So I agree with that.
Mr. Bigford and then Doctors Amire.
My original question, I was going to tack on to a question Daryl had. I think some of the uncertainty that I heard you say was how many teachers are we going to be required to hire? Do we have any idea, are we, do we have any idea of how many teachers will be required to hire under the new blueprint? And can we count on additional funding from blueprint to pay for them?
Well, I mean, we're going to go through an interesting transition over the next couple of years. You have all these school systems that are adding positions right now in a time when teachers are already in a shortage. So we have a substantial teacher shortage. We have a substantial counselor shortage. If we added 10 coun, I don't know that we could fill these three counselor positions. We've had the coordinator of counseling has been open all year. We have not been able to fill that position. So it's going to be interesting with the teacher shortage as these systems add all these people, especially in early childhood. Because like we did five years ago, we expanded our pre-K before it was profitable to expand pre-K. At this point, if you have the room, I don't know if profitable is the right word, but it's, it's going to pay for itself to add pre-K in a lot of these other districts. Well, as they do that, if they have the room, because room could cost them substantially, it's going to take a lot of teachers and a lot of IAs across the state as the state expands in pre-K. Again, last year, I think we were one of the top three or four total number of students in pre-K in the state of Maryland. That's against Montgomery, PG, Anna Rundle, Baltimore City, all those places. Baltimore City might've been one of us higher than us in that number of people. It's a very necessary need. I didn't think I would say that. I wouldn't have said that 30 years ago. I'm absolutely convinced of it. In the last five years, the great need that we have for our pre-K and the difference that it's making. And Kerwin, I mean, the big piece for teachers is going to be as we add additional planning time, children have to go somewhere. And I've said this before, it's a pretty simple illustration. Either class size goes up or you hire more teachers to create more planning time. It's the only two places you have to create more planning. If the four of us have the children and we all get additional administrate, additional planning time, when I, that, that extra, whatever amount of time it is that I don't have children and you don't have children, you don't have children and Denise doesn't have children, somebody's got to have the children. So it's either another teacher or the three of you pick up for when I have extra time and I pick up for when Denise has extra time. So that's class sizes going up or an extra person that we push the children to is where things happen. So in the blueprint, eventually it claims that all our assistant principals will be teaching 20% of their time. We're challenged right now to attract assistant principals into the role, but they're going to teach 20% of their time. So they're going to pick up some potential time for teachers to gain planning time. It's recommended that principals teach 10% of the time. I mean, all those are good philosophical things. I just don't know under our model with the number of people we have right now, how would the, how would the principal teach 10% of their time or APs, even places we have three or four APs? I mean, basically you lose an AP when they're doing that much teaching. It's a good experience for them to teach and be involved and be part of the process. But really where I see the additional staffing coming is going to be with that. The other thing, I mean, again, this Kerwin just has so many moving parts. We're going to see EL funding. So our English language learner funding is going to come in a bigger bucket in the next couple of years. Dr. Willow's trying to get his hands around that. We've had discussions that the money has to follow the child. Well, we might have situations where the only way for the money to follow a child where we have 40, 50 children in one building is we'd have three or four or five teachers there that are EL, but then another building only has one child, might not be able to get the support that they need. So, and that's still coming out of the same pot of increasing money. So it becomes restricted buckets and we're going to have to watch all of those things. And it's very complicated. So my challenge that I see with the teachers is the same thing. The teacher shortage on top of the increase in teacher demand, much of which is happening this year before we even get the planning time, I don't see how it adds up. I, I don't want to be pessimistic about it, but I just don't see how it adds up. And we need a lot more students in college to see these as jobs that they're excited to get. And all I hear is college enrollment and education is generally down. So I, I don't know how it's going to be addressed. It's going to be an interesting challenge.
And I just would lend my support to your idea. I mean, the, the thing that strikes me about even these changes presented today is the bill for increasing the, the salaries for the SROs, which, you know, thank goodness, they're like similar to teachers. Police departments are having a hard time recruiting people into the area because of low salaries. But we have given the commissioners a pass for many, many years when, I mean, I believe almost every county in Maryland, except for Washington and one other county, they pay for their SROs out of their public safety funds, out of the county commissioner funds. And so to me, that's a gaping hole that we can, we can, if we get that money back, we can use it to address some of these behavioral needs and still have our SROs, which are an important part of addressing behavioral needs as well.
And I hope, I mean, it's a perfect illustration. Why did the county need to make, and they've made several adjustments and the city's likewise doing the same thing. It's the law of supply and demand. I don't, can't think of anything simpler than that. The law is supply and demand. And they have made substantial increases in pay and still struggling to keep their positions filled. That is no different, no different than what we're experiencing with administrators, ESP and teachers. The shortage that we would have coming in the near future and struggling with right now, particularly with ESP and administrators, is an equal crisis to, in my mind, you know, we want to all be safe and we all want to have police officers. But I hope we all want to have an excellent education system. And to do that, we don't want to start the year with, you know, 50 openings that have no chance of filling. I, I hope that I'm absolutely wrong, but I could see that number starting to grow substantially. Again, in that report that I sent to the board, if you looked at it from Friday, I mean, there are school systems that open with hundreds of positions open. How is that with everybody adding more positions and people are going to follow the money or going to follow what they believe to be the easier jobs? How's that not going to lead to a greater crisis? We have to keep up and we have to be competitive with salaries, teachers, ESP and administrators. We have to. If we don't, we're going to have a subpar education system and that's not Washington County. We've done a great job with minimal resources. We just need to continue to work together and see this as the same crisis as the police officer shortage. Because if we don't educate the children, they're going to need more police officers, a lot more police officers. I say there's a better way.
Dr. Setmore?
I think 2026, we started requiring administrators to have national board as well, but I can't, where do I find how much money we have earmarked for national board certification?
So we have 26 nationally board certified teachers, 26, 28. 28. That money, we have adjusted into my salary resource pool. It's part of that resource pool.
So it's not in professional development, it's in salaries?
No, no.
Okay.
It's over in the big compensation line because it's all lumped together, but enough, if all 28 stay with us and/or if we have an increase a little bit, where they'll get $10,000. The other part is for next year, we pay $7,000 for anybody that's in a low performing school. Fortunately, Washington County this year is not going to have any low performing schools, but we do have four schools that we can take an option on. And we're calling those opportunity schools and Dr. Willow is going to report on those at the 15th meeting and we'll be asking for your approval for that. If you're a nationally board certified teacher and you're in one of those schools, for next year, you'll get an additional $7,000 on top of the $10,000.
I wasn't talking about the salaries. I was talking about the money that we give to, for professional development to become national board certified.
Right. Dr. Willow, I, I think we're embedded in a professional development line. We're seeing a significant.
That's where I thought it might be, but I couldn't find.
We also get, excuse me, we also get money directly from the state. The state helps pay for some of that, for national board certification. And we also write those funds into Title II, which is our recurring grant to offset those costs as well.
Thank you. Mr. Gupta and then Mr. Gassert.
I just, I just wanted to make a statement. I, I want to agree with Ms. Williams' comment about counselors. I feel like as a student who has talked to lots of other students, you could line 100 students up in a room and all of them would say the biggest problem that our school system faces is that we don't do enough for mental health. Every single one of them. Every single student on our Board of Student Leaders for the Washington County Association of Student Counselors ran on mental health and what can we do more for mental health? I could not agree more with Ms. Williams' statement about counselors and I really believe that we should ask for more counselors, more social workers, more things that are going to support students in their mental health.
Mr. Gassert?
Thank you. I guess I have quite a few questions here, just kind of some, just some thoughts. My first one is, you had said, Dr. Michael, you had said that you felt like other districts were adding a lot more teachers to their.
A lot more positions. I don't know that it'll all be teachers, but obviously if they expand pre-K, you know, for every teacher, they're probably adding an IA. I know there's departments, I know in the one article I think I sent you, one department's adding 14 or 15 more people to their blueprint department on top of the people they already have in there because there's so much paperwork and accounting and data tracking that occurs. We're just not expanding that way, but we have the need, but we have not, I have not addressed it in this budget.
So on pages six through 10 of these, these items here that you talk about, we are adding all these positions to the budget. Those were grant-funded positions in the past. Is that correct?
Some of the positions that you see on these lists where it says federally grant-funded were part of either the reading, I can't remember the exact name, the literacy grant we had for over a million dollars. We've let go of about $600,000 of that. We didn't try to roll into the budget, but we have tried to roll these couple of positions in. And then the other things are items that we've been funding out of Esser funding to keep us afloat and we're trying to pull those in. On another one of those slides, we're talking about blueprint, was part of the blueprint foundation formula. Those positions now have existed for three or four years. That's money that we got in that first couple of years of blueprint that kind of itemized it for a couple of years, had to go in certain buckets, special ed and tutoring for K to three students and things like that. That money, they've rolled it, they've taken that money, a seed money, rolled it into our foundation and we've just had the positions follow that. So none of those are new positions. I don't know if that quite answered your question, but they are now starting to reflect in the, in the budget booklet because before they may have been reflected in grant-funded areas of the book, of the budget.
I know that's very confusing for many people. And, and I think it's going to be confusing for many, many years coming with this blueprint. I don't think it's ever going to be. You made a statement that they were already changing something, that they weren't doing something already they were supposed to do. So I think that's going to be more confusion. But, you know, I think it's funny that they, they give us this money and we, we put these posi- positions in there and then they pull them back, the money, and say, now you've, you've got to figure it out on your own. And I think I have expressed my concern about grant funded positions, that we have to put them back into our budget when we don't have the monies coming in. And I know that it's a, it's going to always be a challenge. And I don't disagree with the positions that you have and your team has added, but my issue is the learning gap that we are seeing, that we, I don't think we've seen anything, we've, we've closed that gap in the last year and a half. And I think those positions were already in place. And maybe it takes time for those positions to get that gap to close a little further, but I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about the truancy issue that we have that continually gets worse. And we've had those positions. I'm kind of the old school and I, and I'm, I don't come from the education background that you all have. I just use a little, I think, common sense that, you know, and you disagree with this and I'm, I'm happy that, you know, we, I'm not happy we disagree, but I'm happy that we can disagree and still be, work through it. But I don't see, you know, where we're going to be this new plan of taking teaching time away from senior teachers and we're going to have a gap again where we're going to have to fill with putting teachers in. I don't ever see us using a principal and a assistant principal to fill those gaps. That we're going to need more staff, more parapros and more teachers to fill those gaps. And now, when we're still ahead of the game versus some of these other counties that are behind the game with salaries, would be the time to pull as many of those people into those positions or spread those positions out a little bit so that we can get as many people in here because we know we're going to lose some, we're going to gain some. But the more we have at the beginning of the game, the better than trying to play from behind. And I just feel like with this budget, only having three counselors in it is a disservice of what teachers have been asking for, parents have been asking for. And I know that you know better than them, but the parents and these teachers that come to us, and just recently, a teacher was saying, you know, the learning gap is, is large and we need help in the classroom. And even though I, I agree with these positions that, you know, are support and leadership, you know, if we don't help those teachers that are asking for them now, we're going to continue to lose those teachers. So why can't we find a happy medium and try to find a way to put, put some of those positions, those, and maybe it's not teaching, maybe it's parapros, more parapros into the schools to help these teachers so that when this is implemented, the career, as a career ladder, when that comes into, to play, that we have people that can help cover those, those times. I just feel like when people ask for something and we continually to ignore them, it just, it'll shut them down. And I don't think our teachers need to be shut down any more than what they already have. And I just wish that we would look at more, you know, in classroom because I think kids need that. I mean, I was a student and I loved my teachers. I can tell you how much I appreciate my teachers and what they meant to me. And I can tell you, my guidance counselor apologized to me later on in life and said, I wish I was there for you more. But it was, I was trying to do a whole school. So, you know, I, I think you need to think about the importance of the connection of the teacher and the parapros to the students versus some of those people that may only touch a few at a time. So I, I really would advocate for more of that. And I think I'm just going to let it go at that right now.
Well, I would like to comment. I don't think I've ignored any requests from people. I mean, I, again, we have a whole list of things we could add to the budget that would benefit children. We'd have to have a means to pay for that. The couple of positions that's been discussed, I think would take us backwards with student achievement. And I think that would be a foolish mistake, but that would be up to the board to make that decision as the budget becomes theirs. Most of the positions are things we have in place and are working well right now and are adding to student achievement. And I can't imagine cutting out 21 special ed paraprofessionals or we need speech pathologists that we can't get, so we're paying a premium for contracted services for that. We have no choice but to pay for the resource officers. The way that this has been lined up, I really think they're a valuable resource. We're working with two short resource officers right now in the, the city because they can't fill those positions and we, we really need to get that addressed. I mean, I have evaluated every position, but I don't want anybody to feel like I've ignored anyone's input. I probably have just been too conservative in my request of the budget. The other thing that builds up is an anticipation that you're going to get these things. And then when they're not funded, you have to backtrack. We're already to the first of February. We'll start our new year July 1st. It'll come up very quickly. The hiring process has already started and we really need to get the transfer process started here right away and get, continue with our hiring process. You know, we'll always have to make trades and adjustments in the budget as we go forward. We think we have a pretty good plan on the balance of the ESSR positions, what's going to happen with those. We've been very strategic about it. I think we've come up with some really creative plans. I know some of that's been shared with the Finance Committee with the positions there and we'd, we'd be glad to go through that again. Some of it might be closed session topic just from the standpoint, we're talking about individual people and I don't think that's a public discussion, but we'd have to check with Ms. Ram to make sure that that would be an appropriate closed session topic. But I'd be glad to go through any of those. But we are trying to find, you know, the needs, needs of children is what drives my whole budget presentation here. And that, that includes a lot of, a lot of areas. You have to have clean buildings, you have to have dry buildings, warm buildings, school buildings to teach children. You have to have space to teach children. You have to have children attend school. We've been tracking attendance weekly by school. I went down through that report today. I need a little bit more time to study it, but I feel like this week is the first week we've been up in probably three fourths of the schools over the last five weeks. So I think we're trying to get rebounded out of COVID so then we can start concentrating on the children who've just lost interest in school. And I know that's a question I ask every place I go, how's your attendance and things like that? Again, just all credit to our teachers, our administrators, our ESP staff that are working hard to keep trying to get us completely back to normal.
Do you have a benchmark of when you feel like you'll see the results moving forward with these positions? If we accept this budget the way they are so that we can say that the truancy rate's down and that our learning gap has decreased? When do you think that you would see that? That we can say that this was, you know, you know, a good wise decision to move forward in, with this direction versus, you know, another direction?
I think without COVID, I think I'd have been confident to say that we would see record results in any way you want to measure it, attendance, you know, reading scores, math scores, whatever, year after year. I think we were really poised, well, with COVID, I think we're in uncharted territory. I mean, a couple of the big challenges we have, we probably have 4% or 5% of our kids that just are not regularly attending school. One student I'm aware of has only been to school two days this, this year. How do we catch up that child? How do I give you assurances that any one thing, whether it's a counselor, teacher, tutor, can catch that child up? I, I don't, I don't know what the effects of that's going to be. Huge shift to homeschooling, huge shift. Now, we have some outstanding parents in groups that do a great job with homeschooling for different reasons, but I think we had a significant number of people that shifted to homeschooling to escape school, either because of fear of COVID or, or whatever the reasoning. And unfortunately, they've set, done that now for a second year. If we get those children back in school, what's, what, how do you, how long will it take to close that gap as new territory? Again, we are part...
We can't obviously wait 12 years to close a gap. I mean...
Oh, no, 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 no. And that's why we're measuring and you're going to hear, and you have heard some of the success stories. We've got to get back to, completely back to normal. I think we have stopped the increase in the gap for kids that are coming regularly to school. For children that do not come to school, I'm just not sure how we are going to close that gap. But I, I think we're doing a great job with things being back. You know, we just have to keep, keep working on it. I, I don't know what the state's going to do, how everything's going to look this year, but it's going to take us some time to recover. We need to recover quickly. We're still trying to teach grade level material to children by scaffolding where they are to where they need to be because you can't just take two years and just say we're going to wipe out two years. We're going to catch up those two years. We have to.
I don't want anyone to think I'm holding you accountable for things that you can't control. And you can't control a kid if he's not in the classroom. But I'm really concerned about the kids that are in the classroom and where they are today and then where they'll be next year at this time. Because I don't think, you know, we have that, that time that allows us to say, well, we'll catch them up. Because I'm hearing teachers saying, we're not going to get them caught up. And I'm concerned about that. And so when I start hearing teachers saying, we're caught up, then I'm going to, then when we're good.
And I think, Mr. Casser, that's why you're seeing some of these other districts invest in 100, 200 positions, whatever it might be. That's their answer to try to deal with this gap. This budget, this budget doesn't do that. This budget doesn't do that. It needs to, but it doesn't do that completely. I think the things that we placed in ESSR and our plans for how we're going to pour our reading tutors and math tutors over into, well, I don't know if it'll be the general fund budget or how they're counting concentration of poverty, they might be counting this as a separate grant. But we have a means to keep those positions going in our high poverty schools. We are seeing evidence right now of children growing. We can see our math inventory is growing from the first take in the fall to mid-year take and we do that again in the spring. We can see our ERI, ERI scores are growing. Just a lot of positive things are happening. I don't want you to think that we're not growing children right now academically. A lot of very, very good things are happening.
And I don't think so. I mean, I don't, I don't believe that you're not growing because I think there are, you know, things that are being very positive. But I'm just looking after the kids that aren't growing because of that. And I know you can't control the ones that aren't there. I get that. So I'll just say I look forward to seeing your results next year at this time.
Yeah.
Colleagues, any other questions, comments? Mr. Stelford?
I just have a comment, you know, there's no doubt you want to fill these ESP positions, parapros and so forth, but nobody's applying for the job, right? I mean, we'd put one wherever they're needed, but in order to attract them, we still need to maintain competitive wages with every other place they can go and everything and so forth. But if the people aren't out there, I don't know what we can do about that if they're not applying for the jobs. I agree. I've visited schools where teachers have said I could use a full-time parapro in my kindergarten classroom, first grade classroom. I heard that at Bester when I went there. But it's like the lady that showed me around, Dr. Williamson, she said, they're not there. We don't, we don't have applicants. So...
If there are no further questions, then we'll bring the work session to a close.
Okay, thank you. At this point, the budgets, the boards, and we look forward to any way we can help respond to questions or gather information that you might need to make determinations that you need to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Thank you, staff.